We have a quorum, so we'll get started. I've got 3:00. Welcome to the March 27th, 2019, meeting of the Champaign, Alabama Mass Transit District. I'm Brad Dial, current board chair, and I'm going to call this meeting to order at this time, reminding board members and our audience to please silence or turn off your phones or electronic devices. Would the board clerk please call a roll?
Barnes.
Here.
Bauer.
Here.
Chaplin.
Cho.
President.
Hanon.
Here.
Dial.
Here.
Quorum is present.
First item is our approval of our agenda for today's meeting, and I'll also remind the public on our agenda, the final item, we will be moving to a closed session at the end of our meeting, and we will adjourn from closed session. We will not come back into public session.
So moved. Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve our agenda for today's meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Audience participation. Anyone in the audience who would like to share their thoughts with the board at this Seeing none, we move on to our next item, and that will be our approval of our board meeting minutes from February 27th, 2019. Please take a moment and review those minutes, and I'll ask for a motion in a second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the board meeting minutes from February 27th, 2019. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any communications from any of the board members? Or Carl?
None from me.
Moving on to the managing director's report.
All right. Thank you, Chair. This is for our February statistics, and I can't recall a time where ridership in one month was so close to being exactly what the ridership was in that same month the year before, but we were within seven rides of an identical ridership, so...
[crosstalk]
Yeah, I wish we had bought lottery tickets this year. So that's essentially a 0% change from last year, and gives us a ridership of 1,375,560 for the month of February. As I note on here, we are full in on the EMCOR reroutes now. Wright Street is closed to southbound traffic, and we are still operating on Wright Street for northbound traffic. And then we have significant reroutes that will be rotating through a variety of different iterations, and I would encourage the public to look at our website, mtd.org, to get the specific details of those reroutes. Yes?
The... Where's the traffic shutdown? Is it extensive?
Yes.
Stops kids from walking?
Yeah.
Anyone?
That's correct. So, yeah, if you couldn't hear Bruce, there's the traffic shutdown, but an additional difficulty, which is what we had on Green Street as well, that there is restricted pedestrian access to cross Wright Street, and that is very inhibiting for traffic, and it funnels, you know, a lot of people that used to just go across the entire breadth of Wright Street are now funneled down into just a few very small tunnels. And so, quite frankly, that makes it very difficult. We still have northbound traffic, but it makes it very difficult to get through there because there's just a constant stream of pedestrians there. But we're working within those parameters, and we'll see how that progresses. The Wright Street work will mostly be completed by the spring of '20. There will...
On the year?
Yeah, essentially, you're... You know, there will be areas that get completed as they move along, and so it won't be completely shut down for that entire length. They're working on portions, and so it's... It will seem interminable, but it really isn't. You know, they get in there, they get aggressive on one segment and complete that, but then they move on to another segment, so there's another closure that impacts that segment. But it's... Yeah, it's a pretty aggressive timeline, actually.
Armory was a same?
Armory is part of the same project phase. I don't know off the top of my head. I'm not remembering the exact dates of when the armory work is being done, but it is during this project. Moving on, the operating revenue was 1.6% above February of 2018, and the operating expenses were 7/10ths of a percent below February of 2018. And as of February, our revenues are 412, almost $413,000 above budget, and the operating expenses are $2.9 million below budget. I would direct you to... I have a lengthy list of comments that were posted on our Facebook page when it was National Transit Driver and Employee Appreciation Day. We did a push on social media and actually within the district internally to communicate our thanks to our employees and to let them know that we appreciate the work that they do and that they do a great job, and we got just a wide variety of significant positive accolades for operators, but really for the system too and the service that we provide. So it was nice to see that.
So first time you've done it?
This was... Yes. This was a... There's a national... This was actually... Amy, is it National Tran... Is it? Driver... Transit Driver Day? Yeah, so it's a National Transit Driver Day, and it's the first time that... Last year, we did it to some degree, but we weren't really all in. We just... We set up a station that we were providing donuts for employees and that kind of thing. But our new marketing manager, Autumn, was really excited about this, and she worked with Amy to put this bigger to-do together for the employees. It was very well received, and so, yeah, it just worked out really well. So it wasn't technically the first year, but it was the first year that we did it at this level.
These are all great comments.
Yeah, yeah.
You ought to have more days during the year that you could do this.
Well, yeah, I'd like to do it every day of the year, let the operator... Let all the employees know how much we appreciate them because they do great work, but, yeah. We don't want to do it all the time because then it doesn't feel special, right?
No, but three or four days in a year.
Yeah. I would draw your attention to the next point. This just brings a smile to my face because, you know, we're spending a lot of time and money, all kinds of resources, on EMCOR, and it is having a dramatic impact during construction on our operations and ridership, as we've been discussing for years now, right? But that next bullet point that talks about the on-time performance, this is one of the main reasons why we wanted to do this project. That is a dramatic improvement in our on-time performance. Now, we only tested it on the green route because that's really the only route that... Well, it's not the only route, but it's the route that has the most significant impact on the Green Street portion of the project. And so, at this stage, it's what we have the greatest reflection of the benefits of EMCOR, and it is really dramatic. You can see that we used to lose on a typical trip, leaving Lincoln Square, going to Illinois Terminal, we used to lose a minute and 7 seconds, and now we lose, on average, 8 seconds. And so, we've gained back. We've learned how to travel through time and break the space-time continuum to gain back a minute as a result of EMCOR.
Physics plus physics.
Yeah, yeah, bust physics. So this is great. This dramatically improves the service for the customers, and they will really feel the positivity when that route performs better and more on time, and they can expect it to be where they want it to be at the time they expect it to be there. And so, that's great. We're very excited about that. And then finally, we've launched the SafeRides Connect app, and so we've transitioned over to the app-based scheduling for SafeRides on the University of Illinois campus for the late-night service... Excuse me. The late-night service for campus, and that has gone pretty well. There have been some wrinkles and bumps and hiccups here and there, but we've motored through those, and we continue to improve the way that the app is functioning, and Route Match, the company that provides that service, is working closely with our planning folks on making all of those improvements. So that's been a great service. I think it'll be really good for the customers, and I know it's really good for our dispatchers and supervisors. And with that, I will take any questions up through page 42.
Additional questions for Carl? Give you a minute to look through some stuff. Dick, go ahead.
On page 15, I noticed a dramatic drop in February's figures at the bottom, the two graphs. Wonder if you might explain those?
Let me pull up a sheet here. February... This is specific to Illinois Terminal. This is not the service as a whole. So let me pull up my Illinois Terminal sheet here. Yes, thank you. I've got Michelle whispering in my ear like the better angel on my shoulder, saying that it is... It's not so much a drop, it's that last year there was an increase because of a significant workers' comp settlement claim. So, thank you, Michelle.
I would revenue...
I think he was saying, yeah, I think he was saying that both revenue and expenses in February at Illinois Terminal were very low. Were very low.
Right. So the expenses were workers' comp-related. We did have an Illinois Terminal employee that had a significant settlement.
So is that spread out over months, or how does that... Because it looks like expenses look pretty straightforward for those preceding months, and then all of a sudden, the graph shows them being almost nonexistent expenses, page 15 at the bottom.
Mm-hmm.
I'll jump in here if that's okay. I'm Michelle Wright, Finance Director. We compared the accrual we had for workers' comp expenses to what we estimate now that that claim is done, and it's now much lower. So we made a one-time adjustment to make the accrual adjusted where it should be based on the new estimate for the expense side.
And the drop in revenue?
Yeah, I'd have to research that. I don't have that answer, but I sure could find out.
All right. Anything else related to Carl's report from anyone? Seeing none. We will move on to our first action item, and that is the Cotter Consulting Incorporated agreement. Carl?
As we move forward with the Yards project, we are getting deeper into the contract negoti... the agreement negotiations with our partners for intergovernmental agreements and for the development agreements. And this is an astonishingly complicated project, and so I feel like it is very important for us to make sure that our bases are covered and that the district and our taxpayers' interests are protected. And so, what we are proposing is the motion that you had before you to authorize me to complete an agreement for financial services as we progress through these negotiations to make sure that our interests are protected and covered.
I read through this. It looks like money well-spent because it's not taking staff... A lot of staff time in something they're not experts in, and also providing some good advice and research. I did have a comment on page 55. I think there's... There may be a typo, or I'm not understanding understaffing. It says, "We recommend commencement of the study at the end of August with the completion of the study before the end of 2018." Is that '19?
I... Well, certainly, it's not 2018.
Okay. I didn't know if something had been done beforehand.
No, no.
Or not?
Yeah, that is a typo, I think.
Okay.
You'll notice that the wording of the motion that you have allows us to have a little bit of freedom to make some tweaks to this agreement.
Okay.
Just as a, for instance, we noticed after this already got put into the packet, but on page 45, in the opening paragraph, this was provided by Cotter, and I think that they, you know, they've got lots of customers, and I'm sure they have boilerplate agreements, but this says for the construction of an exhibition facility. And that is not an accurate description of our project, and so, you know, we want to make that change. And so, that's why the motion that's before you makes it clear that this agreement isn't specifically what we're going to see at the end of the day, though it's in substantial form is what we're talking about for financial services. We're going to make those minor adjustments to make that more clear and to correct any errors in the agreement.
Oh, an exhibition facility could be a hockey rink.
Well, it could be, but even then, that wouldn't be an accurate description for for the project as a whole. Yeah. And that may be what they had in mind. I'm not casting shade on them for it, but we can do better in describing that.
Any other questions? Dick?
Is this just for MTD interests because there are other entities involved that...
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct. In fact, the developer that we're working with, they have a firm that they've contracted with to do this very same thing. The city of Champaign has a firm that they've contracted with to do this very same thing, and so now we are following suit and doing that, and it's just incumbent on all of us to do that, to make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed.
So could we categorize this as you're hiring this group for oversight?
I don't know that I would say oversight so much as I would say consulting services. I mean, they are a resource for us. They are professionals and experts in large construction projects and understanding the complicated financial structures of those projects. And so, we... They will be lending us their expertise in that. It's not so much oversight, it's just they become a partner of ours at the table as we negotiate our interests.
And our current staffing, we do not have the ability to do that within-house?
No, we do not.
Because of... For just lack of personnel, lack of expertise, what?
Well, lack of experience, lack of expertise. I mean, I was deeply intimately involved with the construction of Illinois Terminal, the original building.
Back in the early 2000s?
20 years ago. And I would... In no way would I ever claim that I am an expert and that I am confident in my ability to make sure that I don't overlook something in this extremely complicated, multi-leveled, multi-tiered, interwoven partnership agreement. I absolutely... We absolutely need someone with expertise that does this for a living to assist us in this manner. Think of it this way: The city of Champaign, the Planning and Development Department, they do this kind of thing. So I did Illinois Terminal 20 years ago, and I've done... I've been involved with little projects since then. The city's Planning and Development Department, they do these projects all the time. They're doing Bristol Park redevelopment and, you know, all these campus developments. I mean, they're involved with all of these.
Correct, yeah.
And they have a consulting firm helping them analyze the finances of the agreements to make sure that the city's interests and the city's constituents' interests are protected. So that's what we're doing.
Got it. Couple other just minor points.
Uh-huh.
Now, granted, on an organization that has almost a $55 million budget, $72,000 is a relatively small amount, but it says here in the summary, "With 100% local funds", that's just coming out of our budget, a certain category? Tell me what that means.
It... All of these services will be associated with the asset that we end up with at the end of this project. And so, these dollars are capitalized, and they are coming out of our local capital reserve.
From our budgetary funds? Like you said, the money we already had allocated for these type of things? Or you just could pull it out, or you just decide to do that?
This is money that we have in our capital reserve in the bank, that we will be allocating this for this project, and so it will be allocated to this asset.
Okay. And the last point I did, and I would hope that this goes without even stating, to make sure... This is an introduction, to make sure that the public's financial interests are protected. I would hope that that goes without saying.
Right.
That's the reason why we're hiring these folks?
That's why we're doing this, yes.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm just saying. It goes without saying anyway.
Bruce?
Yes, I'm ready to make the motion.
Anybody else have anything they want to discuss about this item? Any other discussion on this item? Actually, I'm going to have Dick make this motion, okay?
Yeah. I'd like to move that we authorize the managing director to execute an agreement with Cotter Consulting.
A motion to authorize the managing director to execute an agreement with Cotter Consulting Incorporated or other appropriate firm in a form that permits analysis of cost components and financial aspects of the Yards project.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this contract for not to exceed $72,000. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next action item is an update of the bank signature cards for staff. Carl?
So we have had a change in staff. Amy Snyder, our previous customer service director, has been promoted to Chief of Staff, and that position is... Will be a signatory position... Excuse me. Signatory position for signing checks and oversight, and so this puts her signature on file with our bank accounts so that her signature is valid for check signing. And I'd like you to congratulate Amy on her promotion as well.
Congratulations, Ms. Snyder. Any questions on this item from the board? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion.
So moved?
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the addition of Ms. Snyder to the bank signature cards. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is the extension of the First Mid Bank and Trust line of credit to June 30th, 2019, and the addition of the Chief of Staff and Finance Director as authorized officers to borrow on those lines of credit. Carl?
So this is a system that we've had in place for several years. We use these notes for two purposes. One is to... Excuse me, sorry, I'm trying to get over this cold. To fund our capital projects that are paid for through debt service, and so the $10 million note primarily is used for that. We borrow the funds and pay for a capital project, and then we pay those funds back in relatively quick fashion once the project is done. But by borrowing it, it makes that funding process eligible for our state grant reimbursement. The other thing is, though we haven't used it, it's a kind of in-our-back-pocket safety net to have a note available for borrowing funds to use for operating purposes if we have a cash flow problem. If you recall, when the state was having its budget problems and didn't have any budget, our payments for our operating grant, those payments were significantly delayed, and there was a very real concern at the time that we would end up drawing down all of our operating reserve and perhaps even delve into our capital reserve, and so this was a backup in case we needed cash flow waiting for those payments. Fortunately, we got payments before we ended up having to do that, and I don't see that happening again in the near future, but this is an inexpensive way for us to have that backup. So, all of that is kind of general background. What we're doing here today is asking you to authorize us to do a two-month extension to the existing notes that we have because they have expired prior to the end of our fiscal year, and then that renewal time is always 12 months later. When we renew that, then 12 months later is renewal, and so we're always in April instead of at the end of the fiscal year. The reason we ended up in that situation because we were scrambling because of the state budget crisis. We were scrambling, trying to get things in place, and that got us off cycle with our fiscal year. And so, First Mid has really gone out on a limb and really is giving us great service by giving us this two-month extension with no fees or costs associated with that, and they're doing that in an effort to help us get it back on cycle with our fiscal year. And so, that's an advantage for us, and they're allowing us to do that at no cost.
Questions on this item for Carl? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion.
I need that when we approve the extension of the First Mid Bank and Trust line of credit for two months.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the extension of the line of credit for two months. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. That was our last action item for today. The announcements we have are that we will be having a special Board of Trustees meeting on Monday, April 15th of 2019 at 3:00, right here in the City Council chambers, and that will be followed by our regular board meeting on April 24th at 3:00 here in the City Council chambers.
Chairman?
Go ahead.
Our attorney would like to make a comment before you move on to the next item.
Absolutely.
Because it's related to that item.
Fine.
I'd just like to, you to add a couple of additional words to this. There's two reasons I'd like to, for the board to go into closed session. One is, the first, as it's listed, the second is probable litigation. So, if that could be worked into that motion, that'd be great.
So, be, between the words official and followed, if you can just insert "and probable litigation." Yeah, we, we will.
If you're, if you're ready, Linda, please give us a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn into closed session to consider the employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a public official plus probable litigation following our adjourn, followed by our adjournment.
It's been moved and seconded to move to closed session at this time. I'll ask for a roll call.
Barnes?
Bauer?
Chaplin?
Farron?
Hannon?
Dial?
Yes, that motion carries. We are adjourned from open session. We'll be moving to closed session and we'll be following that up with adjournment for the day. Thank you for your attendance.
I do have a quick answer on the revenues for Illinois Terminal being down. It's Michelle here, Finance Director. Sorry to interrupt. I forgot, as I'm learning this job, a large portion of revenue for Illinois Terminal is the reimbursement of expense. So, if expense goes down dramatically, the reimbursement will also.